Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Worcester City Council held because of Labor Day on Tuesday, September 6, 2022. We are in council chambers and being livestreamed on YouTube. It's after 7:30 PM. The next meeting will be on a Monday, and that will be September 20th, 2022. Before we get to the calling of the roll, I would like to welcome a new old council member, Mr. Ansel, as go fill out the term of David Silvestri for Ward 3. So, welcome, Mr. Ansel. He was sworn in about 7 o'clock this evening.
Thank you.
He is duly seated as the Ward 3 councilperson. And I'll point out that the Clerk of Council, Mr. Paulo, and I were notified by Mr. Myers, he would not be in attendance. So now I will look to you, Mr. Paulo, and ask you to call the roll.
Mr. Cavan?
Yes, here.
Ms. Knappick?
Here.
Mr. Myers is absent. Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Mr. Sanders?
Here.
Mr. Ansel?
Here.
And Ms. Warden?
Here.
All right, we have a quorum. The agenda will remain as presented, and I would ask you to join, stand and join the members of city council in reciting the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Well, we usually don't have these many, this many minutes to approve, but we had one regular meeting before the hiatus during July and August, but we then had two special meetings. So, you know, it's kind of like a busman's holiday. We were still here, two out of the four weeks that we should, or the eight weeks that we should have had off. Anyways, the first one, we'll just start with the regular meeting of June 21st, 2022, and I would look for a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Warden to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappick. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. June 21st, 2022 minutes are approved. Then we had a special meeting on June 27th, 2022, and I would entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Motion to adopt, motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Ms. Knappick. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sanders. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say, please say nay, and the June 27th, 2022 meeting minutes are approved. Finally, we had a special meeting on August 22nd, 2022, and I'd entertain one last motion for the approval of the last set of minutes.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Sanders to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Knappick. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay, and the minutes of August 22nd, 2022 are approved. Mr. Mayor, welcome. Hope you had a good, long weekend and had time to enjoy some rest and relaxation, and I'm sure some family time as well.
Absolutely, President Biden-Dyke, and thank you. Nice to, nice to see everybody. Welcome back, council. We missed you, and it's great to have a whole contingent back. And Mr. Ansel, wonderful to have you return to the group, and your leadership will be definitely appreciated here, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Just wanted to bring you up to date on some things that happened over the summer break, things that matter in our community. Seven members of our hospital board attended the Quorum Health Resource Leadership Conference along with Bill Sharon and Scott Boyes as presenters. Worcester Community Hospital was recognized as an IBM Meritif Top 100 Hospital for the eighth time this year. At the conference, QHR commented that strong communities help create strong hospitals, and strong hospitals help create strong communities. I would say this is definitely the case in Worcester and with Worcester Community Hospital. The Worcester Quanis Club hosted the Ohio District Convention here in Worcester on August 12th through the 14th, the Schissler Center in Fisher Auditorium. Approximately 225 Quanians from around the state came to Worcester to be a part of that, so a nice, nice compliment to our community there. David Silvestri ended up retiring, as President Biden-Dyke had stated, and Mr. Ansel was voted into that position, which is definitely big news for us. You all, I'm sure, know that there was lots of paving going on. You probably were inconvenienced at one point or another in the process, because I think half of Worcester let me know that they were all inconvenienced at one point or another. So luckily, it was only about a week where there were some overlapping contractors, and but we apologize for any heartache that happened there, but I think everybody knows that the roads are in much better shape by us doing that. The building by Muddy's is going up very quickly. If you haven't been past there recently, they're waiting on potential grant, we are waiting on a potential grant to help with the TCI property. If that grant would come through, we will be acquiring as a city that property to, for the entertainment district. It would help, the grant would help clean up the property of some contaminations that we've found in the soils. Main Street has been programming music on the square, which is being well-received, and a lot of people are using our downtown here this summer. The Downtown Theater Project received a $500,000 grant to help renovate the old Lyric Theater beside the Steakhouse. They hope to have it done next year, so things are definitely on the move there. This is a great thing for the city because it brings things to do into our downtown, so it really complements the restaurants and the other businesses that are in place there. Our city pools were all open and well-used this summer. We did have some minor issues with pumps and electricity and things like that, but all in all, it really was a good summer for our city pools and the kids that got to use them. Housing stock is moving forward. We have Spring Run Development under construction right now, and Lemon Development out off of Melrose is also starting, clearing and construction piece of it. The TIFF area is a really important player for our city that is still moving forward, and hopefully we will have that in full swing here as the fall moves on. City team are putting together the division budgets. Once they are into Joel and Andre, we'll start working them into our overall budget for the city of Worcester, and they will have it to present to you by the second meeting in November as normal. There are many items on tonight's agenda. We look forward to moving these important pieces of business forward and stand ready to answer any and all questions or concerns that you might have. With that, thank you, President Biden-Dyke, for the chance to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the update. We don't have any petitions, and I noted, three people at least walked in after we picked up the sign-in sheet. So if you want to talk on an agenda item, I need you to sign, sign up. If you're here to speak on zoning, we are having a public hearing, so if you want to speak twice, sign up. If you want to wait till we have the public hearing, you can just say, "I'd like to speak" when the public hearing commences. So if you want to sign up now, here's a sign-up sheet for this next portion, and if you want to wait till the public hearing, then you're welcome to do so.
When the public hearing is?
I beg pardon?
Is the public hearing tonight or another time?
It's tonight.
Okay.
So, so now with communications from the public, you two gentlemen have signed up, I assume Mr. Pike and Mr. Austin. So if you want to speak now, or if you want to speak at the public hearing, or you want to speak at both, it's to your pleasure, so.
I need you to come up there. Yeah, if you can stand up for you.
Yes, I mean, you know, please, please state your name and your address.
My name is Jim Pike, 3936 Stone Creek Drive, and I guess I'm asking some questions related to the ordinance of 2022-16 regarding the annexation of the Twitchell property on Oak Hill. Specifically, I guess, one of the questions is, is it related to the connection of potentially of Inverness Drive to Milltown Road, and if that's on or off the table? Second question, I guess, is, not speaking directly, but I guess I have more questions than statements, but why is there automatic, I was under the impression that R1 and R2 is the default designation when annexation occurs, and this is being brought in as R4? And the question is, is there a plan in place as an R4 designation, and who that developer might, might be that's referenced in the memo from Planning Commission to rezone that as R4? If the general feeling from the neighborhood is probably related to Inverness and the connection with that, Inverness potentially would be used as a shortcut from Milltown to the North End, creating considerably more traffic than what should occur in that residential neighborhood with kids and everything else. So those are the things that I'm concerned about. I hope that you can clarify why it's being designated as R4 initially without the R1 and R2, as I, as we thought it should be a default, and then if you could identify who that developer might be that's looking at the property being that there seems to be an R4 designation in place with a developer in mind. Thank you.
All right, Cody Austin?
I really was looking for the same information, so I think, I think Mr. Pike covered it sufficiently.
All right. Anyone on the administration want to answer these questions?
I can answer some of them. So, so it's Mr. Pike?
Yeah.
Okay, so my name's John Skip, I'm a law director. As far as the R1 designation part of it, it will come in as R1 if the annexation is accepted tonight. And then there will be rezoned, if the legislation is passed, it will be rezoned tonight as R4 and R2, depending on which part of the annexation we're talking about. So that's how that part's handled. As far as Inverness, and somebody corrected, do you want to address that first?
Well, I think we were going to address it during the public hearing. That was the plan.
All right.
And I can tell you, I'm running the public hearing, which is going to be right after this, and we'll ask for people to speak in favor of the rezoning first, and then those opposed to rezoning will go next. And you'll have another, if they don't get your questions answered in the first pass on that, you'll have a chance to get up there again and say, you know, tell me again, or else you miss something. So it probably makes sense to just put that off to the public hearing portion.
Okay, fine. Thank you.
All right, seeing no one venturing aside in this, I'll assume that you also will speak at the public hearing, or you're just here because you had nothing else to do on a Tuesday night, so anyways. That does bring us to committee reports, which we do not have at the moment, but we now have a public hearing, which will be, actually, we have two. First one is on the rezoning request for 75.217 acres. As Mr. Reynolds has already identified himself, he is the chairperson, and as such, I'll turn the meeting over to you, Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Biden-Dyke. We do have two public hearings tonight, both related to the same thing. It's the annexation petition that's before us, and the first order of new business. The public hearing isn't about the annexation itself, and I don't think the annexation itself is what has people excited, it's the rezoning that goes with it. And as Mr. Pike pointed out, he is correct, and when property comes in, it comes in, the default is R1. So if we took no action with regards to rezoning, it would stay R1. But we do have that second piece there tonight with a big chunk being designated R2 and another chunk being designated as R4, and that is the purpose of the first public hearing on that rezoning request. Even though it's coming in tonight, it's not zoned yet, once it's annexed, it will be moment, if they would both pass tonight, there'll be moments where it's R1. So it is technically a rezoning, even though it's not zoned now. The second piece of it, just, I don't know if this is muddies the water or helps clarify, is that because we are bringing this in as part of the tax increment financing district, the TIFF district, that we've already set up or established the framework for, the second public hearing is on the idea of bringing this property, all the annexed land, into that district. So with that being said, and like I kind of indicated before, we'll start off first with the hearing, the public hearing on the rezoning request. We'll ask those that are speaking in favor of the rezoning request to go first, and then when they're done, those that are opposed to rezoning request or have questions, I don't think you have to declare yourself one way or the other, but it kind of breaks down better that way, have a chance. And all we ask, go to the microphone, identify yourself by name, address, and affirm to tell the truth. So with that, we will open up the public hearing on the rezoning request, and Mr. Malley, do you want to start off?
Yes, please, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Reynolds, and good evening, members of council and members of the public. My name is Jonathan Malley. I am the Development Coordinator for the city of Worcester. My personal address is 1864 Christmas Run Boulevard, Worcester, Ohio, and I'm speaking in my capacity as Development Coordinator for the city of Worcester, address 538 North Market Street, Worcester, Ohio. Speaking with rezoning, this particular request comes from an analysis conducted through our planning department. The R4 zoning piece is specific to the property that we refer to as the Twitchell property, and that comes directly from the owner themselves requesting to, is part of participating in the annexation, as part of participating in the TIFF, which would result in the city having an avenue to being able to reconstruct the Oak Hill in West Milltown roundabout area and reconstruct those roads. They have been agreeable to participating. Some of their property would be required in order to enact those improvements. However, they did so on the condition that they wished to request R4 zoning. As we always do, as staff, we evaluate the appropriateness of that, and we felt that it was very beneficial for a multitude of reasons. Number one, R4 zoning generally supports apartment-style neighborhoods, and that goes a very long way to meeting the needs of our housing requests that we've had from our top employers, who've stated that apartment housing in particular is necessary in order to help future workers who are commuting today to actually locate and stay permanently at their jobs by finding a place within the city. Specific to Inverness, Inverness was constructed as a road with the intention of being a through-access route that would eventually connect to West Milltown, at least is how it was planned. As time has gone on, we've seen additional development in this area. And that being said, as it stands today, without annexation, or with annexation and being left to a R1 or even R2 zoning standard, the require, in all likelihood, a connection would be necessary. And R4 serves to prevent this from happening, and the reason why this is, is that even without annexation, if this were to not be part of the city, the property owner could have it developed as residential homes, and at that point, the city could be compelled to allow a connection onto a private road, which would result in a through-access, because by not providing that access, it could be construed as a taking. And as such, that situation exists today. And by making this an R4 zoning, what this does is it allows the area to develop, again, with apartments, and from a market perspective, through connections are not a good fit with R4 zoning, and we've seen that in multiple other R4 zoning developments. Most recently, the one that we worked with on Melrose Drive, the Lemon Development, they had a through-access issue that was very similar, and the solution there was, well, in that case, perhaps that through-access can be stopped, and it can just be maintained as a gate for emergency access only. And the benefit of that is that it maintains exclusivity for both neighborhoods, and that's something that's desirable in an R4 development. We see that at the Redwood Apartments as well, with emergency access to Pecan Lane, so that entire development has one public road, one public route in and out. They're not going through another neighborhood development. And similarly, Palm House Apartments, another R4 area in our area, in our city, again, an apartment community with multiple access points, again, in order, just to serve the market, and because this is private infrastructure, there's not a requirement to have that through-access. And so in all those situations, a single public access point has been maintained, instead of the multiple ones that would be essentially required by a single-family development. So R4 zoning takes us into a place where Inverness can be maintained as a, essentially the cul-de-sac that it is today, without any further access. And if there would be any access needed, from our conversations with the fire department, it's possible that there wouldn't even necessarily need to be an emergency gate. It could simply be left exactly as it is today. So R4 uniquely provides that, along with planned unit developments that are of this style of development because of the market and in terms of how R4-style apartment communities develop. This, there are some other benefits that go along with this, particular proposals, so that would be that, again, in staff's evaluation, we're taking a look at whether or not there's multi-family, it might be an appropriate step between the adjacent residential use and the more intense C3 commercial uses. For instance, this particular site zone for R4 would be immediately behind where Lowe's is today, and immediately north of the planned Worcester City School District expansion. So this process for, from a staff perspective, it seems very agreeable to accomplishing a lot of missions. One, again, being able to maintain exclusivity of the Inverness neighborhood from this development site, and additionally, being able to, by serving multi-family, being able to help foster that new apartment development. Again, we've been hearing from our top employers, such as Gojo Industries and Scheffler, to name a couple. Additionally, we are in discussions with the property owner. We understand that there is a developer who is interested in the site. We don't know for certain going forward that conditions will remain exactly the same, but as it stands right now, we have been approached by a developer proposing a Scottish Highlands-type development, and that, of course, would be contingent on TIFF and zoning being approved. This is an exact fit to what we proposed in the economic development plan that was adopted back in December for the TIFF district. If this development would come to fruition, not only would we not have through-access through Inverness, and Inverness, again, would remain separate, we may be able to eliminate a lift station, which is a benefit to all ratepayers of sewer, and additionally, we could see our TIFF district recapture period basically halved, because this would essentially increase the level of investment and additionally revenues that would be produced. So that's a big savings to our local schools. Effectively, over the course of 10 years, that would be a million-dollar increase in revenue to our partners, and at the same time dramatically save revenues for taxpayers who are footing the bill for the reconstruction of these roadways, which, again, is necessary for safety. Additionally, the same developer has suggested that they themselves started off the conversation wanting to avoid any access to Inverness, which, again, we've, we've experienced this with multiple different companies, it just seems to be a market-driven approach to not have those connections. They've also indicated that they see the green space due to the ravine on the western side of the property, that they see that, the way they framed it to me was, we see that as an asset, and that that's something that we want to preserve and keep. And so as such, with that not being developed, and from a market's perspective, it would be very difficult to develop that terrain, also considering streams and so forth. That would result in the overall development having much less density than is permitted in an R4, and so in a way, all of this seems to be balancing out very, very well. But in any event, I wanted to share that information with regard to the zoning request. R4 zoning for the Twitchell site would allow this area to develop in a way that's, that would be very beneficial and maintain exclusivity for both the existing and future neighborhoods. Lastly, the R2, which is also a big part of this, is zoning that matches the previously approved zoning for the adjacent Spring Run and Ryan Holmes subdivision on Oak Hill Road, which these sites are further south of Twitchell property adjoin. So without further ado, I will say thank you for your time, and we're available to answer any further questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Malley. Anyone else present wanting to speak in favor of the rezoning? And let's open this up to those that are, again, want to speak against it or just have questions, I guess. I'll throw that up there. Mr. Pike?
Do I need to go up there?
And again, even though we know who you are, if you'd please, for the record, identify yourself by name, address, and affirm to tell the truth.
Kind of deja vu.
All over again.
James Pike, 3936 Stone Creek Drive in Worcester, and I live in the adjacent development just to the, to the north of the Twitchell property. And I guess my, what I gather from the last presentation is that this is kind of a, I don't want to say hostage situation, because it's a, you know, if, if R1 or R2 is designated, the road goes, potentially goes through. If it's R4, there's more potential that it wouldn't go through. And is that going to be decided tonight, that the R4 designation? I guess the, the other concern that I have about it is, is there a site plan about what the layout and what's going to be positioned on that property at the moment in time that it's, you know, after it's designated as R4? And I think that it's kind of putting the cart before the horse to see how things are going to fit, what the buffers are going to be between the two neighborhoods, how, what the, you know, it's a great woods behind us, there's a lot of animal life, and deer come up and eat my wife's hostess all the time. So it's one of those things that, you know, what's going to be disruptive? If you've ever walked that property, there's a great ravine there, it's, it's, you know, the kids use it, have a lot of fun, but there's also some drainage off of that property that goes into that ravine, and what's the disruption in the drainage off the cornfield or soybean field? And, you know, how, what's the layout going to be if this is already, if you already have a developer in mind, how's it going to sit in that property? Is it going to be in the cornfield? Is it going to take up some of the woods? All, you know, you indicated not all of the woods, but, you know, what's the disruption in the drainage and, and the buffers between what's proposed and what already exists?
On behalf of the, Jonathan Malley? I'll start, and if I miss anything, Jonathan can... On behalf of Jonathan, if I miss anything, Jonathan can fill in the blanks. So normally, the zoning process, zoning comes first. Any development plans are after that. So zoning is based on what's the highest and best use, does it fit with the comprehensive plan, does it fit with the land use plan? So, other than a planned development, which we have had one recently, every other zoning, zoning is established based on what's, what fits and what's the highest and best use of that. So we don't get into the development plans and those things until after the zoning has taken place. Now, we have a very comprehensive planning and zoning code and engineering code, stormwater management codes, all of those things will have to be adhered to if and when the development plan is submitted at that point. Then we'll look at everything you talked about, you know, the setbacks, the stormwater management, all of those things, and they will have to comply with all of those things. And so that's every development that there is. You know, our stormwater management plan is very comprehensive. Every development has to comply so that, so that it doesn't do damage to any of the existing drainage or waterways. As Mr. Malley had mentioned, you know, initial conversations have been that the ravine and the woods would be preserved, and it's seen as an asset amenity to, to any development there. So that, all of that will take place during the development plan review process, which would take place after zoning is established for that. So I think that was your main question, was there something I missed there?
Yeah.
If I could tag on that a little bit to one of your questions, I think you asked about the timing of this, and how much, what would happen tonight? And the only thing that comes before council is, well, first, the annexation itself. And if that doesn't pass, then the zoning's irrelevant. And the zoning then, once the zoning's approved, whether it's tonight, or maybe it doesn't get approved, but once the zoning is finalized by council, council's done, for the most part, with rare exceptions. The development phase of that is handled through the planning department and planning commission, and possibly Board of Zoning Appeals. But, so as far as this body goes, tonight, in subsequent meetings, when we deal with the zoning issue, will be when that zoning is, is decided. But the zoning is kind of the broad strokes for development. It's not the detail work. That detail work happens at the planning commission level, if that helps.
And I will say that zoning, it did go to the planning commission, you know, there was a public hearing there as well. They did unanimously vote to approve the zoning as R4 at that time. And part of, part of that was based on also our, our planning and zoning manager, you know, who gave recommendations, and part of it was, felt it fit because it's surrounded by R4 on the south, R2 to the north, and C3 to the east, and R4 seemed to fit in that area.
Is there a developer in place for that property at this point in time? Your memo seemed to indicate that the developer was all right with the idea that Inverness would not be extended to Milltown.
Yeah, so I'll, Jonathan Malley again. Yes, there, there is a prospective developer who, again, we've been approached by and we've had conversations with. Part of the reason why we can't, or we have to be careful is that when, when we're talking about zoning versus a site plan, is I can tell you that there's, there's interest in not connecting to Inverness in terms of where the housing would be. This particular developer has described an interest in developing in the cornfield part of it, where it's flat and it's close to the retail. That said, that can't really factor into our decision-making or council's decision-making because that, that is a specific detail, and when, when zoning's being examined, it needs to be viewed through all the different uses that it possibly could be. And the, the one reason why we can speak knowledgeably, though, on, on the connection is just by what we've observed in other R4 districts. So most likely, with the multitude of developers that we've had an opportunity to connect with over the years, there is a strong desire to keep communities independent and exclusive with, with that one primary access in and out. So, so we can, we can look at that pattern of practice, and we can examine what has also happened with our, our R1, or even properties that aren't even part of the city, but may seek a connection to city infrastructure. And, and we, and we see a different practice there, where traditionally, those, those roads along single-family homes tend to end up becoming public so that, you know, so that the city is responsible for things like plowing and road maintenance and so forth. So, so those are some inferences that we can, can look at. We can't make those, we can't say that that's an absolute guarantee, but with everything that we've looked at in the past, virtually everything that we have explored with R4 in, in the last several years has wanted that exclusive access. So, but, but all that said, until this would, until that there, that there would be zoning, the next step would be that whoever has the property would have to, at that point, either sell it or develop it. And at that juncture, whoever is developing the property would then have to submit that detailed site plan to the planning commission. And there's notifications that if there are variances from our code, say if, for instance, a lot of our districts, there's a maximum height of 30, 35 feet for a building. So if somebody wants to put in a 60 or 90-foot building, that would then require the, our, our planning division to send notices to the surrounding owners to let them know, hey, our detailed code that Mr. Montgomery explained, there's an exception being sought. And so that would give everybody an opportunity to, to, again, comment and explain whether or not such a reference or change is, is appropriate. That said, if, if everything conforms with what the zoning code prescribes, then that's handled strictly through planning commission at that point. And that's, that's maintaining all the buffers, the building setbacks. Typically, with a final development plan, there's also going to be requirements for a photometric plan, which talks about, about lighting specifically, so that it doesn't have lighting go off-site. So that, that's, that's an element of, of any final development plan to, to make sure that when these neighborhoods are constructed, that, that, again, they, if they're going to be exclusive, they're also exclusive in their impacts as well, and they're not causing excess light or noise or intrusion into other neighborhoods. And there's also a requirement for, for green space and for, for tree planting. So all of that is called out in, in the zoning code. And so whoever would move forward with developing on, on this site, if it were zoned R4, they'd be bound to follow those guidelines. And if they needed an exception, at that point, it's a whole other public process through our Board of Zoning Appeals. And similar with the R2. So the R2 will have to meet certain width requirements for lots. And so all, all those specifications get analyzed and assessed, also through, through our engineering department, before things are finally permitted to move forward.
Is the connection from Inverness to Milltown off the table if it's designated on R4? So there is still some potential that Inverness could be connected to Milltown?
As much as possible, if any regulatory element that we have, R4 gives us the best assurances that there is not a need for a connection in the future, but no guarantee.
But not guaranteed?
We cannot 100% guarantee that. But from a city perspective, it, it's, it vastly improves the situation from where it is today. Where is, is today, if, without annexation, we could be compelled to provide a through connection onto a road.
But somebody could do it on a whim or as part of their plan?
Somebody can do that on a whim today. R4 makes it, from a market perspective, extremely difficult to do that, and extremely unnecessary to do that. In order to do a, a through connection as an R4, you would also have to establish additional widths around the roadway. And apartment developments don't like that because it pushes out where they can develop their units. So all of a sudden, having a 60-foot right-of-way road built to specifications makes that property a lot less valuable to an R4 developer. So somebody who wants to develop in an R4 area is not going to want to have, have a public road through there. It's also going to create additional issues in terms of the costs for, for development, and also issues with maintenance. So I, I can confidently say, well, you know, to be fully honest with you, I can't tell you 100%, 10 years from now, you know, there could be a change or whatnot, but, but with everything in, in the community's toolkit, if the community is looking to have Inverness remain as it is today without a through connection, R4 is the best tool in the toolkit in order to make that happen.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else, Mr. Pike? Before we move on, anything else from your standpoint?
No, that was fabulous information. Thank you.
You're very helpful.
And again, I know we covered a lot of ground there, but maybe we've covered some points that other people or questions other people might have. Anybody else like to speak against this proposed rezoning, or just raise questions regarding the proposal? Hearing no one, I'm sorry, I didn't see him out of that. We will close this public hearing and go on to the next public hearing.
All right, we will consider that a public hearing has been had on the rezoning request for 75.217 acres. Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Now we have the Oak Hill Tax Increment Incentive District Public Hearing. Again, are you cheering that too?
Apparently so.
Okay, so I turn the floor back over to you, Mr. Reynolds.
This will take less introduction because it involves the same property. It's triggered by the annexation, and we're seeking to add this property to the TIF district that we established back in the spring, I think it was the spring. And again, this requires a public hearing by statute, and we'd ask first for those people that want to speak in, in favor of this proposal to appear, identify yourself by name and address, and affirm to tell the truth. Mr. Malley, you going to lead us off again? Thank you.
Thank you again, everybody, and my apologies. Jonathan Malley, 1864 Christmas Road Boulevard, Worcester, Ohio, speaking in my capacity as development coordinator, 538 North Market Street, Worcester, Ohio. I affirm to tell the truth. With regard to the Oak Hill TIF, staff looks forward to presenting the formal legislation for the creation of five TIF incentive districts on October 17th. Work is already underway on the actual infrastructure as per our previously adopted economic development plan. Ground broke this past week on the provision of Seward, which will serve the future expanded Worcester City School District campus and the Spring Run Ryanholm subdivision. Specifically proposes the creation of separate districts within our previously defined Oak Hill TIF Tax Increment Financing District. What TIF does is it redirects up to, it redirects 100% of future tax revenues, if any are created, from these districts for a period of up to 30 years. A portion of these funds will be directed to the Worcester City Schools, and the remainder will go for public infrastructure, specifically the reconstruction of Oak Hill Road and West Milltown, aroundabout at Oldman and Oak Hill, new Seward for residential development, and the expanding school campus, and aroundabout at West Milltown and Oak Hill Road. Each district, and again, five are defined in grouping of parcels, one being Spring Run, the second being AEP's property, third being a combination of Worcester City School property and several residents who are annexing in as part of the legislation ahead. The fourth district is the entirety of the Twitchell property, and the fifth district is a combination of Worcester City School District land and land owned by Weaver Custom Homes. TIF does not reduce current revenues, so the revenues that all districts are receiving off of the existing land will continue to grow and will continue to appreciate as, as values grow. However, with new development, provided that there's new development, our school partners will receive a gain of 25% of the revenues that they would have otherwise, until the initial $8.4 million of public infrastructure is completed. And then after that, would proceed to earn 100%, whereas additional tax revenues will be redirected to support ongoing maintenance of the city's infrastructure. Specifically, for an update, a 45-business-day notice has previously been provided to the Wayne County Schools Career Center and also to the Wayne County Commissioners as required by law. And additionally, with regard to this hearing, a 30-day notice has been mailed to the owners of the individuals residing within the TIF districts. Each owner may opt to have their property removed from the TIF by either notifying us in writing, appearing at this hearing, or otherwise communicating with us that they don't wish to have their property contained within that district. Although to date, we, we haven't had any, anybody suggesting otherwise. Not dissimilar to a grant, a major point, this project represents a massive return on investment for Worcester taxpayers and all sewer rate taxpayers. This work will resolve a major safety concern on our city's busiest two-lane road. We have over 12,000 vehicles traversing Oak Hill each day. And particularly as our school campus expands, having roundabout installation installed at Oldman and West Milltown has been a long-dired, long-desired solution that would not be possible except for this opportunity to redirect revenue from private investment into public infrastructure. And at $8.4 million in new public infrastructure, this eclipses all of the revenues that we've received for local projects for our CDBG, CHIP, and ODOT TAP grants combined over the last 10 years. So it's a huge opportunity to support safety, ongoing infrastructure for our, our community, and to additionally address our, our needs for a growing school campus and need for future residential development. With that, I just wanted to share that for the record and say thank you very much.
Would you just add one more thing?
Yes, sir.
Reassure people this will not cause their taxes to be any more than they're paying now, nor anyone in the surrounding area will not have a tax increase because of the TIF.
Correct. Actually, it'll have the, the opposite effect in the long run. But this, this does not change anybody's tax rates. It does not reduce revenues. It is only focused on new development that takes place, and that new development will have the same experience as anybody else. And in the long run, by virtue of the fact of having $8.4 million of public infrastructure being reimbursed through private development, it's that much more revenue that Worcester City residents will have freed up, and will, will be lower pressure for taxes in the future. So actually, would, long-term, have the opposite effect. So, very good point, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malley. Sorry to hijack your public hearing.
It's fine. Anybody else like to speak in reference to the Oak Hill Tax Increment Financing Incentive District Public Hearing? Seeing no one, Mr. President, we'll close this public hearing.
Okay. Well, we'll consider our second public hearing to have been held and concluded, and that will move us on to the unfinished business portion, where we have holdover from our last meeting in June of 2022. And this must be, at least initially, the Bob Reynolds hit parade, and I know eventually you'll turn it over to Mr. Sanders, but before I get to you, again, there, Mr. Reynolds, I will turn to Ms. Apollo and ask her kindly to read the title.
Ordinance number 2022-14 amended, and ordinance amending Chapter 351 Parking Generally, Chapter 355 Off-Street Parking Facilities, and repealing Chapter 357 Parking Violations Bureau of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Worcester, Ohio, by establishing a Civil Parking Violations Bureau under the authority of Ohio Revised Code Section 4521, Decriminalizing Most Parking Violations.
Thank you. Mr. Reynolds, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President. As indicated in the caption, this is a rewriting of Chapter 351 of the Worcester Codified Ordinances dealing with the traffic division or traffics citations. And there was a number of fine tuning that was done throughout there, and one of the things I note that, that is included in the draft we're looking at now is that, I think in section 35116, I believe.
Yeah.
That was where the amendment was made last, at the last meeting pursuant to a request by Ms. Warden that was approved, and now that everybody's had a chance to look at that. But the biggest difference or the biggest change is not that section, nothing against that change, but it's the decriminalization of traffic tickets and making this an administrative matter instead of a criminal matter. And I know that there's been some discussion of, I guess I'll draw you specifically to the issue, 351.21A, which involves the length of time that a vehicle can be parked on the street for loading and unloading. I am going to suggest that we not deal with that tonight. I've talked to Ms. Knappich and Ms. Warden. The three of us are the Laws and Ordinances Subcommittee, and if there's interest in digging down into that, we can do that subsequent to that. But I'd really like to propose that we get this approved tonight and would make a motion to put this on third and final.
All right. Motion by Mr. Reynolds to suspend the rules. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ansell. Nice to hear your voice again, Mr. Ansell. Would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Knappich?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansell?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
And Cavan?
Yes.
All right, the rules have been suspended. Mr. Reynolds, I look to you again.
And again, I'm not trying to cut off discussion on the finer points of this thing. You know, those, they're, this isn't a perfect set of ordinances, and nothing ever is. No offense, Mr. Scavelli.
[laughing]
It's close to perfect. But, you know, we can do those, deal with those in due course. So, I'd make a motion to approve ordinance number 2022-14 as amended.
All right. Motion to adopt by Mr. Reynolds. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sanders. Any further discussion? Ms. Knappich?
As Mr. Reynolds said, I just wanted to make sure that people are aware that this is, this is not the end-all and be-all of any, any parking or traffic ordinance. We've had several discussions, many of us here on council, about commercial vehicles being parked on streets, and that is something that we will be addressing more closely. But I just want to make sure that there are people out there or in here that are concerned about that. We have not forgotten that aspect of this legislation, and we will be addressing that as well. That's all.
Anything else? Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Knappich?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansell?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
And Cavan?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2022, is it day 14?
Yes.
Yes. It seems so far away from these other ones.
[laughing]
It passes.
Because it is.
And I know Chief Fisher, who's here, will be happy to not have to spend all that man and woman power to go to some of these muni court matters with, since it's now decriminal. So, good idea. Thank you for bringing it to our attention there, Chief. That brings us to new business. First one's ordinance number 2022, day 16. It'll be presented by Mr. Reynolds. But before we get there, again, Ms. Apollo, would you please read the title?
Ordinance number 2022-16, an ordinance accepting application for the annexation of territory located on Oak Hill Road and West Milltown Road and contiguous to the corporation limits.
Mr. Reynolds, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the annexation itself. Technically, it has nothing to do with the zoning or with the TIF district. Those are separate matters. We're just now dealing with a legislative piece that would bring this into the city. Not the first time we discussed this. It started back in the spring when we had a resolution to extend services. It's since gone to Wayne County Commissioners. They've had their go at this with the public hearings, and they've approved it. Now, it's back to us to finally accept the annexation. Mr. President, I'm going to request that we suspend, make a motion to suspend the rules and bring this to third and final reading.
All right. Motion by Mr. Reynolds to suspend the rules. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sanders. Ms. Apollo, would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansell?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
And Knappich?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended. Another motion for us, Mr. Reynolds?
Yes, I'll make a motion that we adopt ordinance number 2022-16.
All right. Motion to adopt by Mr. Reynolds. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. President.
All right. Second by Mr. Ansell. Any discussion, questions, comments? We've already sent the Commissioners notice as to what services would be provided. I, I think we've kind of got an idea of what we were in for, and it's going to be a boon to the city housing stock, that's for sure. Seeing nothing further, Ms. Apollo, would you call, please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansell?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
And Knappich?
Yes.
And Sanders?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended. Mr. Reynolds, another motion, perhaps?
Mr. President, I will move for the adoption of ordinance number 2022-17.
Okay. Motion to adopt by Mr. Reynolds. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappich. Any further discussion? I did provide to you folks the provisions under the Worcester Codified Ordinances with regard to what we looked at with regard to making this decision. And as you can see, at the very least, we need to consider what was presented and by the, I think, the Planning Commission, and at the same time that there's criteria that they looked at and that we can use to make our decisions. So, and because of the way things are set up, all the other planning, such as site plan, site design, comes later regardless of what, what it's owned as, and that only makes economic sense because no developer worth his or her salt would spend tens of thousands of dollars on a site plan that might be on a property that's not zoned for what the site plan is designed. So, that sometime maybe to look like we put the cart before the horse, but actually, it makes perfect economic sense on the developer's end. So, that being said, any further discussion on?
Mr. President, I just, I want to thank Mr. Ross and Mr. Pike for coming tonight and, you know, pressing your concerns. And I guess I'm going to vote in favor of this because, you know, I think the biggest concern they have, I think, is about the extension of Inverness. And again, there's no guarantees. We rezoned this, you know, it could sit idle for 10 years. The developer that may have it under option now could, you know, go away for one reason or another, and another developer come along. But long-term, the best protection against that being a through road into Milltown is C4. We're also, you know, we've, I'm sorry, R4. Did everybody excited?
All right, you just gave half the room a heart attack.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. I should just shut up now on the head. But, so, long-term, I, I did think R4 is the best fit. And, you know, we've heard, I think we've all heard in this room, whether you're elected official or not, but the need for more housing, and it can't be all R1 and R2. We've got to find some higher-density housing starts somewhere in the city, and I think this is as good a spot as any.
All right. Thank you. Anything further? Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansell?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
And Knappich?
Yes.
And Sanders?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended. I look to you again, Ms. Knappich.
Thank you. Move to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Knappich. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sanders. Any further discussion? Pretty routine. Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Ansell?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Knappich?
Yes.
And Sanders?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2022-22 passes. Now, we return to a Ms., the Mr. Reynolds Show, who will be introducing Resolution Number 2022, day 27. It's slated for three readings. Ms. Apollo, would you please read the title?
Resolution number 2022-27, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to enter into a, enter into and continue a contract for property and general liability insurance for the municipal government and allowing for immediate enactment.
Okay, Mr. Reynolds, I look to you to take it away.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is just a, an ordinary piece of business. The insurance renewal is upon us. This is our general liability insurance for the municipal government, and we currently have, is a continuation of our existing coverage offered through the, what is known as the Ohio Plan. Administration reports good history with this group. We've been with them for 12 years. We've had one rate increase in the past six years. I think we all wish we had the same experience ourselves. And unless there's questions, I'd like to move to suspend the rules.
All right. Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Reynolds. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Warden. Would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Knappich?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
And Ansell?
Yes.
Rules have been suspended. Mr. Reynolds?
I make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2022-27.
All right. Motion to adopt by Mr. Reynolds. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappich. Open this for discussion. I should point out, we do have a local servicing agent, which is Whittaker Myers, and they've treated us very well, although I don't see Mr. Bender here tonight. Usually, he has a calendar or two for us. That's probably why we didn't get a wait, a rate increase. There was an austerity program on passing out calendars.
Okay, so in section one, Worcester City School District needs to be Wayne County Commissioners.
Correct.
Correct.
All right. So I guess to satisfy your exacting requirements, Ms. Knappich is going to have to present it and then move to amend it. Am I reading you right?
You are.
Okay. So, Ms. Knappich, the floor is yours.
Do you want the title read first?
Oh, yes, yes.
Ordinance number 2022 dash 22. An ordinance authorizing the city of Worcester to accept a transfer of land from the Board of Wayne County Commissioners.
Okay, Mr. and Ms. Knappich, the floor is yours, and you can do however you want. But Mr. Scavelli is kind of handcuffed as you need to be.
Oh, those legal people.
I know.
Anyhow, I think I was, I was stuck in here to break up the Mr. Reynolds and Mr. Sanders show tonight. So, thank you very much, much for that. I would first make a motion to amend section one in ordinance number 2022 dash 22 to read the transfer of real estate from the Board of the Wayne County Commissioners is hereby accepted and approved.
All right, Ms. Knappich has moved to amend section one to read instead of the Worcester City Schools in exchange that for Wayne County Commissioners. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cavan. I saw his hand before I heard your voice.
No words.
And it's hard to ignore your voice, Mr. Sanders. Would you please call the role on the motion to amend?
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Knappich?
Yes.
And Sanders?
Yes.
All right, the section one has been amended and substituted for the Worcester City Schools is now the Wayne County Commissioners. That being said, now I look to you again for yet another motion or discussion or whatever you want to do.
Wow, thank you.
Because I think the handcuffs are off, so it's carte blanche.
Oh, that, that's a dangerous thing to give me, directive to give me. This is just a piece of clean-up legislation, frankly, where we have some right-of-way on Oak Hill Road on either side of Oldman. They're just road right-of-way that could have been included in some former annexations but were overlooked. And so we want to make sure that all of this property that's annexed into the city is contiguous. There's nothing left out. And that's, that's really pretty much it.
So is there a motion somewhere?
I would move to suspend the rules.
All right, motion to suspend the rules by Ms. Knappich. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cavan. Would you please call the role on the motion to suspend the rules?
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Knappich?
Yes.
And Sanders?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended. I look to you again, Ms. Knappich.
Thank you. Move to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Knappich. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ansel. Any further discussion? Pretty routine. Seeing none, would you please call the role on the motion to adopt?
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Knappich?
Yes.
And Sanders?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2022 dash 22 passes. Now we return to the Mr. Reynolds show, who will be introducing resolution number 2022, day 27. It's slated for three readings. Mr. DePaulo, would you please read the title?
Resolution number 2022 dash 27. A resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to enter into a, enter into and continue a contract with property and general liability insurance for the municipal government and allowing for immediate enactment.
Okay, Mr. Reynolds, I look to you to take it away.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is just an ordinary piece of business. The insurance renewal is upon us. This is our general liability insurance for the municipal government. And we currently have, is a continuation of our existing coverage offered through the, what is known as the Ohio Plan. Administration reports good history with this group. We've been with them for 12 years. We've had one rate increase in the past six years. I think we all wish we had the same experience ourselves. And unless there's questions, I'd like to just suspend the rules.
All right, motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Reynolds is their second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Warden. Would you please call the role on the motion to suspend the rules?
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Knappich?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
And Ansel?
Yes.
Rules have been suspended. Mr. Reynolds?
I make a motion to adopt resolution number 2022 dash 27.
All right, motion to adopt by Mr. Reynolds. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappich. Open this for discussion. I should point out, we do have a local servicing agent, which is Whittaker Myers, and they've treated us very well. Although I don't see Mr. Bender here tonight. Usually he has a calendar or two for us. That's probably why we didn't get a wait, a rate increase. There was an austerity program on passing out calendars. Any further discussions? Seeing none?
I would, I would just note that I, is this accurate, that there's only been $500 in claims for last year and, you know, what, what we've gone through of 2022 already? That's pretty remarkable.
So far. There, there might be things in process, but so far, yeah.
We have no wood up here, but I would knock on it. That's great.
Anything else?
Who is it?
Seeing none, would you please call the role on the motion to adopt?
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Knappich?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
And Ansel?
Yes.
Resolution number 2022 dash 27 passes. And now the torch passes to Mr. Sanders, who will be presenting resolution number 2022, day 28. It is slated for three readings. And Mr. DePaulo, would you please read the title?
Resolution number 2022 dash 28. A resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax lobbies and certifying them to the county auditor.
Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. As counsel may remember, back on June 6th of 2022, we sent this resolution, 2022 dash 20, to the county for their approval of the amounts and rates that is shown on Schedule A. At this point, this county Budget Commission has sent this back to us, saying they accept it, and now it is our job to finalize by approving this. And with that, I would motion to suspend the rules of counsel and place this on third and final reading.
Motion by Mr. Sanders to suspend the rules. Is there a-
Second.
Second by Mr. Ansel. Would you please call the role on the motion to suspend the rules?
Reynolds?
Yes.
Knappich?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
And Warden?
Yes.
Rules have been suspended. I look to you again, Mr. Sanders.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappich. Any discussion? This is, again, a routine thing we do every year. And if you want the fine details, I'm sure Mr. Dordia would gladly spend a lunch hour and then some explaining material. Seeing, seeing, seeing no one's excited at that prospect, would you please call the role on the motion to adopt?
Reynolds?
Yes.
Knappich?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
And Warden?
Yes.
Resolution number 2022, day 28 passes. Now, the next series of resolutions have to do with the Tax Incentive Review Council. Most of you have dealt with this before. There is a committee that meets that is overseen by the wondrous Mr. Jonathan Malley, who did such a nice job on the zoning portion here earlier. But you ought to see him action during this because we have a number of Turks, as it is known in shorthand, that he keeps track of and presents. And we review every one of them, and he reduces it to a simple understanding of what, what's going on with them. And I know that, and maybe he'll have a time to talk about it, is that our portfolio is quite substantial for a town this small. And for those who say that tax abatements don't work, we're living proof that it does. And I know that, you know, the school system is the biggest bearer of not getting funds if there was no abatement. But I haven't seen a more recent one. But in 2019, our school had a carryover of $40 million, which seems that even with the abatements, which normally a piece of property maybe bring $3,000 with the abatement and the improvement, they'll be, end up getting $40,000 or possibly even, even more because farmland does not generate much. So these abatements do work, and Jonathan Malley's done a great job of organizing and keep, keeping them all straight. So I don't want to steal your thunder there, Mr. Sanders, but I felt compelled to say that because I, the mayor and I both sit on the Turk and, you know, I'm very appreciative of what Mr. Malley says or does. So with that, I'll let you take it away, and I'll keep my mouth shut.
What's I think, we need to read it first?
Yes.
He's a little long-winded here.
Resolution number 2022 dash 29. A resolution accepting the recommendations of the Worcester Tax Incentive Review Council with respect to existing enterprise zone agreements.
Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. All of counsel, I know that you received minutes from the Tax Incentive Review Council that was held on August 22nd at noon here in City Hall. Hopefully, you had a chance to read through those minutes because basically what those minutes do is they explain most of what we're going to do the rest of the evening here in terms of item 6 through 13 related to the various portion, parts of what the Tax Incentive Review Council or Turk, as its acronym is. So the piece of legislation or the, the resolution we're looking at right at the moment is simply the fact that we are going to accept the recommendation of the Turk Committee or Turk Board related to the enterprise zone or EZ agreements that the city currently has, currently has. And before we go any further, is there any specific things you want to discuss with that, Mr. Malley, or is pretty much everything in the legislation fairly cut and dry?
Everything is recorded in the legislation and agenda item. Again, just, we have continued to, continue to see that portfolio grow in revenues as projects fall off of exemption, resulting in a major savings for, for the community. For every, I guess I'd be remiss in explaining that for every commercial property that we can have developed with the basic sector employment, not only does that increase job opportunities, but it also lowers the burden of taxes long-term for homeowners while at the same time supporting those schools.
Right. Okay. Well, thank you very much. And as a side note, just, we are, what, one of 66 cities in the city that have this type of active activity in our portfolio with our Turk?
On, on our behalf with respect to the enterprise zones, we rank somewhere in the mid 15, or I want to say approximately 15th. And then with regard to CRA, we last have the third largest portfolio. A reason for that, however, is because unlike other communities, we have made our programming available to small downtown businesses, whereas a lot of other communities have, have not offered that. We have welcomed that opportunity in partnership with our other economic development partners. And that's why you see that portfolio. But that's also why I believe that you see the downtown real estate market having grown in value so significantly over the 10 years when we've been tackling this thing 15 feet wide storefrontage at, at a time. And so that's some of the underlying reasoning as to why we have so many.
And I, I got to say, it's got to be one of the reasons we have such vitality in our downtown in terms of businesses, in terms of being an attraction, being an out-of-town destination, is that there aren't many empty storefronts, or if there are, they don't last too long.
No, this is, like you say, the, the whole, the whole TIRC that we have throughout the city. I mean, it, downtown has definitely been probably the most noticeable in terms of the positive development with that. And candidly, I mean, I, I get a number of people that stop me or call me and say, hey, you know, how's your downtown, you know, how do you guys do this downtown like this? So it's a good thing. And at this point, related to resolution 2022 dash 29, related to the EZ agreements for the TIRC, I would motion to suspend the rules of counsel and place this on third and final reading.
A motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Sanders. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappich. Ms. DePaulo, would you please call the role?
Knappich?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
And Reynolds?
Yes.
All right, the rules have been suspended. Mr. Sanders?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Sanders. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ansel. Any further discussion or questions for the fountainhead of the Turks?
Is that you?
What?
Is that you?
No, that's just Jonathan. Seeing none, would you please call the role on the motion to adopt?
Knappich?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
And Reynolds?
Yes.
Okay, resolution number 2022, day 29 passes. We turn to resolution number 2022, day 30. It'll be presented by Mr. Sanders. But so I don't forget, I'll turn to Ms. DePaulo and ask her to please read the title.
Resolution number 2022 dash 30. A resolution accepting the recommendations of the Worcester Tax Incentive Review Council with respect to existing Community Reinvestment Act agreements.
Mr. Sanders, floor is yours again.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. This is for the, to take the recommendations of the TIRC related to the Community Reinvestment Act areas, or CRA, and approve those. Again, with the, as we've discussed previously, the, there is a difference between the two, but yet they're all, they're all basically reviewed by the, by the TIRC Committee. And at this point, we, we see that, we see the positive results of what we have with this program. So I would motion to suspend the rules of counsel and place resolution 2022 dash 30 on third and final reading.
All right, motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Sanders. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ansel. Would you please call the role on the motion to suspend the rules?
Cavan?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
And Knappich?
Yes.
Rules have been suspended. Mr. Sanders?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Sanders. Is there a second?
Second. Go ahead, Ms. Cavan.
I heard Ms. Knappich first, so Ms. Knappich seconded. Any further discussion? I just want to say too, just so it doesn't get lost, and that, yes, there's an abatement of property taxes, but the number of jobs that it either creates or has saved is phenomenal. And, you know, we are the benefactor of the income tax that these jobs generate. So it, it works for us as well.
You know, as an additional touch point to that, Mr. President, just as a reference for the community, 39 projects with investments totaling $43 million, with additional payroll of $45 million, with 218 jobs. That's a significant contributor to the economic viability of our, our city and the downtown. So those are significant revenue, tax revenues, investment revenues, and job revenues.
Good point there, Mr. Ansel. Anything further? Seeing none, would you please call the role on the motion to adopt?
Cavan?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
And Knappich?
Yes.
Resolution number 2022, day 30 passes. We turn to resolution number 2022, day 31. It also is presented by Mr. Sanders, slated for three readings. But it's slated that Ms. DePaulo must read the title before I get back to Mr. Sanders.
Resolution number 2022, day 31. A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter in a, to enter a mutual termination agreement with Excess Limited for CRA incentives permitted through ordinance number 2013, dash 40 for immediate enactment.
Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we have seen success in the dollar amounts that Mr. Ansel had referenced previously, we have a case here where the, it's mutually agreed upon between the TIRC Commission and the property owner of Excess Limited that to terminate their current CRA. And the reason for that is, is that in their initial signing or, or being part of the program, they had improvements that they were going to do to their properties, and they had expected a, a fairly larger increase in tax percentage for these improvements. As it's turned out, that has not been the case. And so for the amount of additional annual reporting that's required as part of this, being part of the CRA, the owner's decided that it's, it's in his benefit just to, to terminate the, terminate the agreement because the reporting is just costing him as more than what he's saving in terms of the tax abatement itself, or the tax savings itself. So with that, again, this, this comes straight from the TRC, and, and the economic development staff recommends the termination. It's mutual. So with that, I would suspend the rules of counsel and place this resolution on third and final reading.
All right, a motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Sanders. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ansel. Would you please call the role on the motion to suspend the rules?
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Knappich?
Yes.
And Cavan?
Yes.
Rules have been suspended. Mr. Sanders, a motion?
A motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Sanders. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappich. Any further discussion? They got no benefit, did they?
Correct. The CRA in that standpoint, the, the company formed the investment that they said that they would. They created the jobs that they said that they would. Did not result, though, in any tax increase. And so as a result, the company is having to report and disclose information each year without any tax benefit. It doesn't benefit our operations as a city to continue having them in the portfolio, and it doesn't do them any good. So a mutual termination allows them to, to bow out, and it allows us to straighten up our records.
Yeah, I just wanted to make it clear. They got no tax benefit that would, some people say, well, why didn't we get that back? But they never got any in the first place, and it actually cost them more money than they were going to save from the, of being in the program.
Is that, is that because of the location?
What's that?
Is that because of the location? Is that a flood?
Sorry. That would be due to how the Wayne County Auditor's Office has valued those improvements. So while they recognize that construction took place, in this case, it was the installation of some docks in order to better access these facilities for trucks and other enhancements to the warehouses. When the Auditor's Office and their consultants reviewed the property, they determined that while these improvements have been made, they did not result in a taxable increase in the value of the property.
Location, location, location. Mr. Cavan?
Right.
Anything else? Seeing none? Would you please call the role on the motion to adopt?
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Knappich?
All right, Resolution number 2022-31 passes. Next resolution is 2022-32. It will be presented by Mr. Sanders, slated for three readings. But if you would, Ms. DiPaolo, please read the title.
Resolution number 2022-32, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter a mutual termination agreement with Coyote Group LLC for CRA incentives permitted through ordinance number 2019-12 for immediate enactment.
Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours.
No, thank you, Mr. President. What we have here is a slightly different reason for the mutual termination. The Coyote Group LLC performed a remarkable rehabilitation on the property as they had promised to do, and is in compliance with the agreement. However, they have, in, in the process of making those improvements, have found a buyer that is looking to, it was going to be a tenant business, or it will allow a tenant business for a permanent downtown home and long-term employment agency. And at this point, will also then generate between $6,625 to $7,435 in additional property tax. So again, we, we did what the plan was, is which we helped these guys get a foot in the door, be able to make rehabilitation, and then turn around and be able to create a long-term, hopefully a long-term employment and home in the, in the case of a building that at this point needed, needed a little bit of TLC.
This was the 15-foot wide building that had the shoe repair shop, which?
Yes.
And which, you know, obviously 15-five, wide-foot building doesn't have, you know, we don't have a lot of options, and they turned it into, you know, they took a pig's ear and turned it into a silk purse, so to speak. So do you have a?
I motion to suspend the rules of counsel and place this on third and final reading.
Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Sanders. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappick. Would you please call the roll on the suspension of the rules?
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Knappick?
Yes.
And Cavan?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended. Mr. Sanders?
A motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Sanders. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ansel. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Knappick?
Yes.
And Cavan?
Yes.
I'll take that as a yes. You're getting harder and harder here as the evening goes on.
What?
Okay, Resolution number 2022-32 passes. Next ordinance is number 2022. Our next piece of legislation is ordinance number 2022-18. It'll be presented by Mr. Sanders. It is slated for three readings. And before I get back to you, Mr. Sanders, Ms. DiPaolo, would you mind once again reading the title?
Ordinance number 2022-18, an ordinance amending ordinance number 2014-06 by authorizing the Director of Administration to amend an agreement adding Purple Martin Pictures LLC to the Community Reinvestment Area Agreement with ATO LLC, and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, this is just, again, this is a... Oh my. This, this is adding, in this case, we are joining, we are adding an additional member as part of the agreement to the CNC Well at Properties. The LLC had conducted a major building rental rehabilitation as committed, and has been well maintained by the current owner. The current, the tenant-turned-owner, ATO LLC, has increased their employment at the site, and the addition of the property holding company allows ATO LLC to efficiently continue its operations at the site, and are asking to add the Purple Martin Pictures LLC as part of the agreement. And is there anything else that we need to add to that? Or is it literally that straightforward?
It's, it, it's that situation. Previously, ATO LLCs and...
Sorry about that.
You know, I gave that handcuff analogy, and now he's been a policeman all the rest of the evening, honest to pie.
So ATO LLC and Purple Martin Pictures LLC are owned by the same individual, but they are two distinct, separate legal entities. And Purple Martin Pictures LLC came about as the proprietor's holding company. For accounting purposes, they, they like to, we'll frequently run into a situation where we have two separate entities, employer and group owning the property. So as such, they've, they are not changing their operations, but because they've changed their structure legally, we need that owner to be an entity under the agreement for them to continue to be eligible to receive the exemption.
But it doesn't change any of the particulars in terms of what the...
No, they've doubled the employment, and they continue to invest in the building. They do a remarkable business where it, it's serving a national marketplace with the tech work that they're doing. It's pretty exciting to have a firm like that in our community.
Yeah, it just kind of cornered where I, I work.
Yep.
Mr. Bytenberg?
Yes.
I need to publicly say that I am going to recuse myself from signing this legislation, and I designate Mr. Joel Montgomery to sign because of a relationship I have with, with the person in this resolution. So just want to go on public record.
All right. Anything further?
No.
All right, so I'll look to you for a motion.
I would motion to suspend the rules of counsel and place this on third and final reading.
Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Sanders. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Warden. Would you please call the roll, Ms. DiPaolo?
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Knappick?
Yes.
And Cavan?
Yes.
Rules have been suspended. Mr. Sanders, another motion?
A motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Sanders. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ansel. Would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Knappick?
Yes.
And Cavan?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2022-18 passes. Now we'll look at ordinance number 2022-19. It is presented by Mr. Sanders, slated for three readings. And before I get back to you, Mr. Sanders, I'll turn to Ms. DiPaolo and ask her to read the title.
Ordinance number 2022-19, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to amend the city's agreement with CM Properties LLC as permitted through ordinance number 2011-11 for immediate enactment.
Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours.
No, thank you, Mr. President. Yes, the Economic Development Staff recommends the modification of the CM Properties LLC has an amended job and payroll, or is, wants to amend the job and payroll requirements that remain higher than they've represented, that then represented at the onset of the project, and will bring the project back into compliance. The amendment allows the TIRC's recommendation for the modification, which was previously accepted by, by us via ordinance 2021-73. And again, this is really just with, with the changes that are allowed, we're just obligated to make the adjustment in this, to, to allow this to continue to move forward. So with that, I would motion to suspend the rules of counsel and place this on third and final reading.
All right, motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Sanders. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappick. Would you please call the roll on the suspension of the rules?
Cavan?
Yes.
Knappick?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
And Sanders?
Yes.
Rules have been suspended, Mr. Sanders. I look to you again.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Sanders. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappick. Any further discussion? Mr. Malley, if I recall, this amendment reduces it down to the levels that is still within the minimum requirements.
Correct.
So they're technically in compliance. They just had a bigger idea that they would be able to hire more people.
Correct, they're still performing double the state requirement.
Anything further? Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Cavan?
Yes.
Knappick?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
And Sanders?
Yes.
Rules ha, or ordinance number 2022-19 passes. Brings us to the penultimate piece of legislation, ordinance number 2022-20. Again, we will be calling on Mr. Sanders to present it. And this is slated for three readings. But before I get to you, I'll ask Ms. DiPaolo if she would please read the title.
Ordinance number 2022-20, an ordinance amending ordinance number 2010-24 by authorizing the mayor a firm authorization of CRA exemption to residential units at project site, and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Sanders, the floor once again is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to punt this one a little bit to Jonathan. This has to do with the Merchant's Block property. And at this point, I'll just let him explain it because I know he can do it better than I can.
Wise man there, Mr. Sanders.
This is a change brought to the TIRC at the recommendation of the Wayne County Auditor's Office. Our agreement with Merchant's Block LLC today at Halman always envisioned that there would be residential condominiums constructed on the second and third floors of the facility, with the understanding that that would transfer ownership. However, the actual agreement, while it contemplates condominiums, it also does require a specific written authorization for that transfer to occur. Our pattern of practice has always been to take all transfers to Worcester City Council so that everything is performed out in the open with full council consideration. So at the auditor's request, we brought this recommendation to the TIRC that we affirm ongoing assignment of CRA privileges to the residential units in this project, which means that if somebody who is a resident there today decides to sell their unit, this amendment that we're making will instruct the auditor to continue exempting that property so long as the commercial exemption exists.
Jonathan, for clarity, what is the balance of the remaining term for the joint occupancy of Merchant Block?
I believe we carry this through 2024.
Okay.
In terms of when we would be looking at, I apologize, 2026 is when we would be looking at, I'm sorry.
Because it started in 2010, correct?
Correct. We will be looking at this sunsetting after next year.
So it's a 15-year abatement?
12.
Oh, 12, okay.
And, and it'll sunset at the end of 2024.
Okay. Thank you for that clarity.
And I've been, I've been on here long enough, and my memory serves me correct, that clearly was an intent when we passed the CRA that it would also accrue to the residential units.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, correct. This just satisfies the auditor's requirements.
Yeah, well, we want to keep the auditor happy. Otherwise, we would have to spend a luncheon with Dr. Andre Dordia having to explain the nuances. So...
No, with, with that explanation, like you said, I would motion to suspend the rules of counsel and place this on third and final reading.
All right, motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Sanders. And if you would, I'd take a second.
Second.
Second by...
Thought you would never ask.
Mr. Ansel. Ms. DiPaolo, indulge me and read the title, please.
Ordinance number 2022-20, an ordinance amending ordinance number 2010-24 by authorizing the mayor a firm authorization of CRA exemption to residential units at project site and allowing for immediate enactment.
All right, Mr. Sanders, do you have yet another motion there?
Well, we kind of already did that.
Yeah, we are.
I'm sorry.
Because we have a motion to suspend the rules of counsel. Would you need to vote out?
So I, I just kind of need to call the roll on the motion to suspend. So Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Knappick?
Yes.
And Cavan?
Yes.
All right. The rules have been suspended.
I motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Sanders. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ansel. Any further discussion? Seeing none, would you call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Knappick?
Yes.
And Cavan?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2022-20 passes. Brings us to the final piece of legislation. Ordinance number 2022-21. number 2022-21. It will be presented by Mr. Sanders. It's slated for three readings. I got to tell you, Ernie Banks would have come out and say, let's play two. There's no way I could play two tonight after this marathon bit of legislation. Would you please read the title for one last time? And of course, it is one of the longer ones.
Of course, yeah. Ordinance number 2022-21, an ordinance amending ordinance number 2014-18 by authorizing the mayor to join Graham Holdings LLC to the community reinvestment area agreement with Thank you. Echo Cole, Allow Tenants as Party to Agreement and to Affirm Authorization of CRA Exemption to Residential Units at the Project Site and Allowing for Immediate Enactment.
Okay, Mr. Sanders, for the last time, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I again will ask Mr. Malley to give us an explanation of this, because at this point, it's, I could probably stumble around here for 10 minutes, and he can get it done in seven, so.
I say five.
Two for two.
There you go, yeah, two for one.
I'll be lucky if I get nine. Same same exact situation. The agreement contemplated that CRA privileges would be extended to residential units up above. One, a couple additional attributes to this is that Graham Holdings LLC has come to acquire the commercial units down below. That is a very good thing. That is because Graham Holdings LLC is the holding company affiliated with Weaver Custom Homes, Inc., which has been always, in the original agreement, they were going to be the tenant there. They have now come to own that property outright. They have also, because we need to additionally affirm to the state of Ohio that we're abiding by relocation law and ensuring that our tax-exempted properties are not resulting in any relocation, we also affirm the tenants when when there's a separation between landlord and tenant. And in that case, the tenant would be Weaver Custom Homes, Inc., who, again, was in the original application, and also Fingerprint Homes LLC, which is a new company created through Weaver Custom Homes, which will be opening their doors here in downtown shortly, and a pretty exciting concept there as they try to address some of our our housing challenges in our local area. So again, with this one, we're we're really doing three things, affirming CRA privileges to the residential units up above, allowing Graham Holdings LLC to step in as a co-enterprise to the commercial responsibilities, and affirming that Weaver Custom Homes, Inc. and Fingerprint Homes LLC are authorized as tenants in in the project.
Thank you very much. Like you said, you did a lot faster than I would have. And with that, I would motion to suspend the rules of counsel and place this on third and final reading.
All right, motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Sanders for the last time, hopefully this evening. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappich. Would you please call the roll, Mr. Apollo?
Cavan?
Yes.
Knappich?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
And Sanders?
Yes.
Rules have been suspended. Do you have another motion?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Sanders. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappich. Any further discussion? Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Cavan?
Yes.
Knappich?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
And Sanders?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2022-21 passes. This brings us to miscellaneous portion. No one signed up for the public comment, but I will turn it over to counsel, and we'll start down the row with Mr. Cavan and work our way to Mr. Reynolds.
Okay, well, thank you. I would just say welcome back everyone from our summer break. I hope everyone enjoyed. It was a nice hiatus, although we did have a couple of sessions back. We'll miss Mr. Silvestri, but we did gain Mr. Ansel back, so yay. We we look forward to working with him. He's always a strong voice of reason. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Warden?
I couldn't have said it better. That's all I have to say then.
I'd like to thank counsel and the administration for deactivating me from my free agency role. I'm a firm believer in fate, and there was some reticence initially, but I'm certainly happy and excited and enthusiastic about re-engaging in the process and filling in in the interim position for the next year and a half. But more importantly, I just want to thank you for your vote of confidence and trust. So thank you for that, and thank you for allowing me to serve for the next year and a half in this interim role.
We picked you up for the budget pennant run. Mr. Sanders?
We need you, Johnny. I have nothing to add this evening.
Ms. Knappich?
I just want to reiterate that with all of these resolutions and ordinances that we passed regarding the approvals by by the Tax Review Committee, that this really is a a positive for the city. When you look at some of the storefronts downtown, for for example, the Running Store, and that was an itty-bitty, teeny-tiny, narrow space that was in really bad shape, and the Polans came in and they they did a wonderful job with it with the help of the city, and many others have done that as well. And we're very fortunate, especially following a pandemic where nobody was out shopping and nobody was out doing anything, and everybody was doing everything online, that we still have a very vibrant downtown, and we have a very vibrant business community in general. So I just wanted to make sure people knew that this is truly an investment in the community. And that's it for me.
And we'll give you the last words there, Mr. Reynolds.
They'll be short and sweet. I have nothing to add.
All right, I sure hope he hasn't forgotten after all these months. Do you have a motion for us, Mr. Ansel?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Ansel. Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.